We'll have a discussion about it. Can we stop Sonopie? Can we stop Sonopie?
I called Sonopie and talked to him. Sonopie wants to do what they're supposed to do. Split it if they can't do it. That's all. He has no job. But they keep doing the same thing.
So, Willis, we don't have any minutes.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, we don't have it. So, we can stop that? Well, what we can do is say more further subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
We should be telling more. There's gonna be a higher level. Tell me something on this side.
Some Christmas song.
Yeah, more than one ticket in the fall. That's what I heard. So, his son is...
Yeah.
Son and daughter. Yeah, she's, I think she's... That's, then it's...
No, no, I mean, it's, I was just curious.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anything else. That was the only thing that I heard.
Glad to see you.
Take minutes, sir.
You think the new guy take minutes too, right?
Uh-huh. No, I'm, I'm meditating. It's not here today. She's hopefully working at home for business.
Slow down.
Mr. Post volunteered. I thought that was stepping up.
Brother here, brother here, he's a little bit more people. That's nothing for the last time you're here.
So, I think we're just a little ahead of schedule. Seven o'clock. I'm gonna call our meeting to order. Because this is going to be a public meeting, I'm going to open up the public meeting first and get that done because we noticed it to be seven o'clock. Once we're done with the public meeting, then we'll continue on with the regular planning board meeting. But, notification being what it is, we'll open it up with Ronald and Judith Johnson. Clayton, if you'll introduce yourself so that Mr. Post can take the minutes of the meeting. And as you're talking, make sure you put on all of these for us.
Thank you.
Ronald Johnson's here. So, hi, Johnson.
Thank you.
This is a sixteen pudge of robe. Three D Tep Topo.
Here's the notification. So, please, put the notification in the paper.
Everybody, everybody got it up this? Too many bodies.
Every single person who's a butter has to be at Fishing Game or Fishing Game. So, he has to send a certified mail receipt that letting them know about this thing coming in. So, every butter is in here.
Yep.
You have any questions?
No, I looked at the packet in there. I didn't find any notes on... What's the use? That, basically, nothing.
Thank you, John. Julie, do you have any questions?
No, no.
Do we have any butters? Any butters in the audience for this? Any in the audience have any questions? Anybody want to make a motion to...
Questions, please, Jeff.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. We got a lot that's sounding. How many do you want?
You said they have one sign. You need two.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah.
He's more worried about this one.
Not much to sign. I'll give this one. We can just sign each other.
He decided to.
I have two. Yes.
The application, the public notice, and all of the notices. Then we will get the bill. We'll put that all together.
Right, and we'll have, like, Christie here.
No, I know. Larry and I have been discussing it, and he's got a sales worksheet. So, we'll sort out with the three or four. So, we'll sort them together in fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
So, just keep...
You want to, you want to keep these in, in our box?
Where could we mix a little?
Yeah, I took... She checked all of them since she started doing. I'll make sure she forgets. She can keep it in the plan. That way, it won't get... Right, that way, it won't be shut around and lost. So, I'm gonna put that in there.
Okay. So, public meeting is closed. And we'll open up the regular meeting once it is wrapped. So, John, the public meeting is being closed. The regular meeting of the planning board. Yeah, we're going to need that. I'm sorry, I thought we already had the application fee in the paper.
No.
Yes. I don't know, Phil always handles it.
Yeah.
One fifty?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's where it is.
Take care of all that stuff. The fee and the paper. Okay. Article that you had to post. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Let me get the bill. Where's the bill for the...
Oh, it's the bill for the papers. This is their document.
Yeah, that's your complex. So, that plus one fifty.
Write it for two twenty-five right to the town?
Yes.
Yep. Two twenty-five ten.
Oh, that's... Just down the right points. Thank you. Thank you. We're all set then. All right. Have a good night.
You too.
Yeah, you guys too.
All right, so...
Seven pound. They added a new reverse?
Yeah.
Put our receipts for the check.
Yeah, he's gonna take this cancel check receipt, but we are gonna need a receipt.
Yeah, we have them printed up. I don't know where, maybe you put them.
We'll get it all from now. So, I want to just do the minutes, and then we'll have Christie come up. We'll keep you on with the business. We're figuring out procedures here, process. And I will get in and do that. So, Melissa sent these minutes in here. And the only thing that we changed was that I had her put me down as interim chair. And I didn't know if you guys saw anything else. So, what we'll start doing is as we get the draft minutes, we'll give you a paper copy here, but we'll send them out via email so we can all look at them. At a time. If you're fine with them, I'll accept the...
Make a motion, please, Jeff.
I'll second the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we are still accepting applicants to board. And we have another applicant here tonight. Two applicants here tonight. Excellent. So, please come on up.
You want me to let you come up?
No. So, just basically introduce yourself and tell us your interest.
I'm Christine Ian. The current town board member. But I can't stay there because I have too much time living at home. But I live in the town. I'm really involved in it, and I deserve it. It should be something that I already have some knowledge of after my time starting there. I, I can still be learning for sure, but I do have quite a good understanding of it all. I have read all the zoning and planning, all this and all that stuff. So, I just thought it's putting some, like, a capacity that I could serve in and remain included and involved in my community. And I would really love to be considered for it. I guess there's not a whole lot to say, but that's why I'm here.
So, would you be able to commit a full year?
Yeah, absolutely. There's no, yeah, I could definitely commit the amount of time that it takes to be on this board. I have no questions about that at all.
Because it's not just, just the monthly meeting. I mean, we do work meetings, and we are updating all of our ordinances and processes and procedures so that we have full time doing things besides the work meetings and all sorts of that kind of stuff.
Yep, and I would really love to have that. I mean, it would be nice to have some. It is nice to have something, ensure something that you're working on. It's nice to be involved and to know what's going on. I know for a fact that I can commit that time to it. If I work for a moment, I would be able to come to meetings for sure. I don't have any questions about that at all.
And then the other thing that I'm asking everybody is, would you have interest in being an alternate if we determine someone else is better suited for a regular member? Okay, excellent. And the alternate member, I want everybody to understand, we have one of our members who spends an extended time away. So, there would definitely be a lot of involvement in the board.
Dethler.
Dethler, yeah.
I'm sorry, because you think that one or two. I'm like, I think it's one. I think Larry's still on the board.
Yeah, yes, yes. He's a full member, but, you know, he leaves in November and is gone for several months. So, the alternate would step up. The alternate would come to all the meetings, but then they would be a full voting member for six months, five months. So, it wouldn't just be somebody who would just come to the meeting just to be there just in case. They would, they would almost be like a job sharing alternate hire. I don't know how else to put it. Next one.
I'm feeling a little underqualified having Christie speak.
Thank you.
My name is Adam Kimble. I've lived in town since 1994. I have a business I run right out of town. A growing family coming up in town, and I'm just looking for a way to get back into the community. I have absolutely no experience. I just heard that there was an open seat and that you guys are gonna need it. So, I figured I would come now. Throw my name in the hat.
What do you do for business, Adam?
I actually have three. I do a logging instruction business. I sell firewood. And then I have a flower. Very mobile driveway. Mainly all of the... I do have two of these on the beach that I took on this year over there at the Lill Lake Development. So, it's right on board.
You're on the turnpike?
Yeah. I'm almost at the end of your own.
I think you're my husband. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yep. So, it's, what struck you about the planning board?
Well, my interest initially was in the select board. I've been to a lot more select board meetings. This is actually my first one, board meeting. And that has to be quite a heated environment. And that doesn't really suit my, my personality. I thought this would be a good way to kind of ease my way in, kind of get to feel the things without so much pressure, maybe. Like I said, I just try to find a way to get back more with my boys growing up in town. It seems like a little more involvement in the community would probably, probably be better.
So, again, would you have any problem if we approached you to becoming an alternate?
No. Like I said, I have no zero experience. I would be completely green. So, I'm sure it would be more of a hassle sometimes than a help, but I would have no problem at all. Probably be a better way when you learn to get involved at a slower pace without being like an anchor that got dragged along. So, yeah, that would bother me at all.
Excellent. I'm just gonna ask them, do they have any questions for us either?
I don't think so. I have a pretty good idea of what you guys are doing, what is coming up on the plate and everything. Emmy, you're gonna at least be knowledgeable of what's going on. So, I'll be here one way or another. I'm gonna be coming to all the meetings over and over. No, I don't think I have any questions.
Adam?
No questions at all. I'm all ears at this point. No, it would just be a complete learning experience for me, which I know would be a hassle at times. But I think it would also be a benefit at times.
Amy, you're like, you have more knowledge about the town in general?
Well, that's the thing. I've been here for so long. It's kind of like, I can't believe that it's taken me this long to feel comfortable enough to step into something like this. But it changes things when you start having kids. It puts it in perspective for me, you know? Started a little fire. Town's changing. There's some big changes going on in town, and it's, it's not looking like the same town I grew up in. It's kind of scary in one way, but, yeah. Trying to help, trying to learn. And, yeah, I'd like to help out if you have to do so.
No, pointed, pointed by the select board. And again, there's... The idea is that we would talk to people and then bring our person that we thought would be best suited in. And then the alternates also. But no, it's the select board who appoints the members. I think it was, I was reading some old town reports today. Seventy-nine, seventy-eight, nine, eighty, reggina. There was a Warren article that they put up to see if these, they should go to elected positions rather than appointed positions. Nobody voted on it.
Zero votes.
Zero votes.
All growing and bashing, zero votes.
So...
They make a change.
And that would be a topic for discussion at the board, you know? So, again, it's, it's putting procedures and things in play, and things have changed in forty years. So, there's a lot of work to do. I, several alternate members would not be a miss, you know? We can only have five board members, but it would certainly be a help to have several people that would come in and help us work on updating the master plan, updating a lot of the various ordinances and procedures and processes that just, just need to be brought up to date. So, I thank you both for your interest. We'll, we have to bring this to the board of selection. Hopefully, we can do it before...
Our next meeting is a month away.
And so, it's, it is after the...
Yeah, yeah. Because, I mean, all we're gonna do with the election is sign papers.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not even gonna bother you guys with it. So, it will be after town meeting.
I will say that, of course, there is obviously gonna be a period of time, a month or so, that I won't be available.
Oh, sure.
You keep that in mind when you're thinking about this. I will be definitely available for then up until July. And then it might be like a week or two before, maybe, that I'm not gonna be as available. So, probably be comfortable, sleep a lot. And then after that, you know, there's gonna be a couple of weeks where I'm not gonna be going anywhere.
Except McDonald's.
So, keep that in mind when you're thinking about it.
It's, it's, it's all good. And not, that's not a consideration. You know, you do what you can.
I was telling Sue about how sometimes I sneak out and I'm spending with different daughters.
She told me that, I lost it.
So, we got them catched off?
Yeah.
Thank you for this, Adam. So, again, it won't be till after, towards the end of March, whenever the next full select board meeting is.
Should I have my phone number on there? Or have you guys only...
Yeah.
Phone number, email. Either that or I gotta come knock on the door.
Well, that's all right. You don't have to go so far.
No, I don't have to go that far. I have a four-wheel drive. I can make it up to drive.
You sure can. Watch out for the cows crossing.
You sure you can't be bad?
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other old business? So, I guess we're onto new business.
Okay, um, my name is Adam Christie, I'm a sub division designer over in Sunapee. Actually, I've got a couple of small ones that must be seats here. I'm just not, mostly, I'm just not aware of the process that's at here. I just wanted to bring this, applications or whatever. This is a rather unusual situation, is that it's gonna be a subdivision that is in both Croydon and Sunapee. And the orange highlighted portion are the three lots that are in Croydon. All three lots total between Sunapee and Lot One, all three lots are greater than... Yeah, all three of them are greater than the three and a half acre minimum for the zone. And most of, we're anticipating that the two vacant lots will be built on in Sunapee. That's not necessary. Lot One, which is pretty, where the dwelling is for the, for the owner now, that is in Sunapee, it's on Town Sewer. It's on Town Sewer. So Lots Two and Three would be, would be on Septics. And we plan to zoom in to the state by now for Sunapee.
So Town Sewer for Sunapee runs up, does it run up Northwest Lane, but doesn't come down Melody? Does Melody's a private road, emergency lane access toll road?
Yes.
So for driveway permitting, they'll have to get driveway permits to Sunapee? Joe, didn't you say that this was had to be a mutual planning?
Yeah, Sunapee wants to be involved in it. They wanna actually be here if we do signing and everything else. And they want, they have some things that they're making him take care of and everything, but...
Yeah, I'll go on to that meeting. I think that's the third, you know, April to come in people.
Can you notify the board? Maybe one of us might go over there.
What was your name again?
I'm L G A.
What's the minimum acreage in the zone for Sunapee?
No, lots, we have, me, Sunapee is very good zone.
So what would stop one of these lots from putting a common driveway and subdividing off onto these back lots? He's got a one and a half acres. He's got one and a half acres. So they could make a common driveway and come back here and sell off this lot in Croydon and come here and say, you know, we have a right to put in a driveway. We want to develop back here. Cause he's got one and a half acres in Sunapee. So he's got the minimum acreage in Sunapee.
That would be a right-of-way issue, since there's no frontage in Croydon. It would be a right-of-way issue that would have to be looked at.
Yeah, it's always with the courts and, and I know it's right-of-way off of a private class six road and, but there's this little piece right here. This one probably not, but he could get something right here.
So, I mean, yes, someone could potentially build back here.
Yes, they could subdivide that off.
Oh, subdivide.
He's, he's got one and a half acres.
Yep.
He could, whoever purchases this lot has potential to cut this lot off and sell this driveway.
Sell that. Well, no, because he doesn't have enough, he doesn't have three and a half acres.
I think, I... Can't we make that kind of a conditional, condition of approval? So that, that was in the deed, that it was all supposed to be one lot. And yet, here we are.
Well, there's also the fact that the lot size that's gonna remain in Croydon is under the three and a half plus. It's actually creating two landlocked lots. Which are both violations.
I mean, they've got, they've got the, everything in Sunapee. I, we have no control over Sunapee. Sunapee's regulations are net. The only thing that we have to worry about is, and quite honestly, we can't say what Croydon can do.
Right, right. But still, we can't create a landlocked and, and, you know, the, the leftover lot size that's actually in Croydon is not gonna be our three and a half. On any of the lots.
Just, I mean, is this all one lot now? And they're trying to subdivide it into three and they just happen to be split between Croydon and Sunapee. So that's kind of making it into six.
But if you separate them, this one and this one are gonna be landlocked because they don't have road frontage. Okay, plus every one of these, if you look at the remaining, isn't up to our three, three and a half minimum. None of them are.
And they're looking to build on these two, is that... I don't know much about this town. I mean, I see your point, but I also see if it's like...
It's gonna be backland. I mean, there's not much that can be done. If they build out over here, as long as, even if they build out over here, it's all...
But I see your point where it's less than three and a half, but it's also weird because it's total that less.
Well, yeah, I mean, but our regulations is, our part in town had to be three and a half plus the landlock. That's the big...
What is the zone allowed here in Sunapee? What, what can they do in the zone?
One and a half acres.
Is it residential only? Is it like commercial? That's it? They can't like put in a... I'm just asking because I don't want something that's allowed in the zone in Sunapee to spill over into residential only. Okay, so it's rural.
It's either rural or residential. Actually, it's probably rural residential. So there's no commercial essentially allowed in that zone.
Not much we can do about it.
No, I mean, I...
Don't have any minutes about that, so there's not much we can do or say. And my, my concern is just anything that's gonna spill back over.
Well, my concern is the landlock and the size because we have a minimum in our ordinances of three and a half. So after the split, even though it's more than that to begin with, after the split, none of those lots will be conforming lots. So we have three non-conforming lots.
No further subdivision. As long as the zoning stays rural residential and that's it, we can't have junkyard, big rock store, used car lot. I don't think that there's much we can say about it. It's, it's conforming to Sunapee. It's gonna be developed on Sunapee.
I'm just, I'm not crazy about setting precedent on unapproved.
I mean, what would the alternative be though? They would have to basically split these two and then maintain one of these. I mean, like one of these would have to go with the other, right? Or they would all three have to sit the same on the Croydon side?
Yeah, because I mean, all three would...
Like, that's the alternative.
Yeah, with all three of these going together, doing an entrance off of the Croydon part down here. Because they can probably get a zoning variance for the forty-foot road frontage there.
But I mean, that's not gonna be desirable for the...
That would be a zoning variance on the right side.
Right, because that would be the only way to make them not landlocked. And create a landlock.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's unfortunate. There's, there's no other way. You can't enter into it any other way except...
Right.
You can't put another road into it, but now you've got to look from one way. It would almost be a stomp off for us not to say, you know, do something, but...
Well, what, so I mean, either, whatever, I mean, questions we have, it sounds like first probably need to go to, we have to see what happens in Sunapee meeting. With that information and then potentially joint.
Get the process, get an application, as far as the waters, do I notify them?
Yep.
Sort of by their witness.
You gotta put a notice in the paper if you're Sarge.
So I do that too?
Well, no, we do that.
But if, I'm just wondering if, I guess it's two very separate processes, but... I mean, I don't know how much is done in Sunapee yet. Because I'm just, I mean, I'm wondering if you would wanna do that yet or just wait because...
Well, their meeting, I think it's like April third, April ninth, something around here.
Because then that would be, I mean, April ninth, and then we push it into May, right?
Yeah, I'd like to, we should probably reach out to Sunapee.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously sending an application to Sunapee all next week for that meeting. The application is due...
Yeah, because he was, he was real interested in knowing how we were going when his first came down. That was the first contact I made with Sunapee, to see what they needed.
Who is, who's that?
Yeah, that's who I was talking to.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, we need to speak to Sunapee. I'd like to speak to Mr. McKee and ask him some questions. And I'd like to see what their process is.
If this is Sunapee, this half on us.
Yeah, this is part of it. So he owns, these have already been subdivided. He owns this and all of this, all of this. This has already been subdivided. He comes up off of here and comes over here. So he's gonna keep this part. This is gonna become one lot.
Seems like the first one, the previous one was really straightforward. This is like really complicated.
No. Thank you for sending that to me. I'm forward to it.
Okay, then these would, well, that's Sunapee, so whatever. The well site is on Septic or it's Sunapee, so that's not our concern.
I mean, if you... Why don't we talk to, until we discuss it, to one of those talks to Sunapee?
I, I would feel more comfortable.
Yeah.
I really wanna talk to Sunapee.
I mean, Mark, Mark, when I talked to him, it was all preliminary and he only had speculations and what ifs. Now that he's got some drawings and stuff, he can be a little more assertive on what he's expecting.
Okay, so you've, you've actually spoken to Sunapee?
I haven't personally. The owner has, Mr. Creed, Mr. Creed has talked to them. And it's, it's in at the state right now, getting some of his approval. We should have that one.
All right, so we, Clayton's gonna send me Mr. McKee's email. I will reach out to him. We'll have a good discussion. Hopefully, we can get on board. Maybe even attend that meeting in Sunapee. And then bring you back in.
That's fun.
No, I appreciate the heads up, but I really wanna see what they're talking about. Because everything's gotta come from Sunapee into, into Croydon. So I think a, a discussion with them before we go further.
And I mean, we, well, I guess we won't be officially evaluating, but we'll, it sounds like we'll have another meeting before they even have their meeting.
Yeah, so we can have further discussion and put together a list of things that we wanna bring up aside. Excellent. So we're just gonna table it until we get all of that.
Is there an application process that I can do now?
I don't really have an application process.
I can just do a little request, a little report of what we're, what we're asking for. I, I just wanna, I know we were going through all of that, so I just wanted to do this, so it's helpful.
That's not, we'll end up making business part of this. I will apply the application. Process for the subdivision, but because we're not actually going to accept this right now, I don't want to get the wrong role. But you would be responsible for sending out, like Clayton did, the letters. We'll put the notification in the paper, but the person who's doing the subdivision is paying. And I will get to the fee structure as well. And so we send you that information as we, as we correspond. Just know that in your correspondence, once you and I have it, I'm going to be sharing it with the rest of the members of the board. I'm just going to be a point. And then we'll, we'll continue on. I'll let you know what I've discussed with Ms. McKee in Sunape and I'll keep you in the loop. But that way we can at least get some information.
Okay, so do you. Send out the letter. Prior to the Sunape hearing, which is, your meetings are once a month?
Once a month.
So I'm just, I'll just plan on being here in May and leave the letter notification 10 days prior to the, yep. Okay, so sometime in April, I'll.
You and I will respond before that. So if we're going to go to the Sunape meeting and talk to them, we should be able to determine. The meeting in May is going to work for you.
Okay, yep.
Is that, that?
Sure, yeah. Sorry. I'll give those.
You want to think about?
No. I've been committed on other topics. So I'll just save that for a little bit more.
Thank you so much.
Well, definitely, but also one of these credit, this is missing like a lot of the credit side in terms of what's next there.
Oh, yeah, getting a map and pull that up. I researched that. Everything's going to be a little. Funny to. Work with. Any other new business?
Are we going to comment on any of that?
Want to look at it? Come on up to the table and look at it.
So I've already looked over the plan. Something you guys said earlier is probably interesting. When the property was originally sold, it was like a contingent that it had to say and whatnot. So how do they sign a paper that agrees to that and then subdivide after?
It was in the deed and it was in the, so the deed went over, but the wording in the deed was. Moose. Yeah, vague, moose. Yeah, so it just said that it was to go over as one lot, which means, okay, it went over as one lot. And there was. When they did the annexation, so that it came over and became one large lot across the town lines, it was supposed to stay as one lot. But it never actually said merged as one lot of record cannot be subdivided.
I got you. So it's one of those technically.
Right.
Yeah, it didn't get spelled out.
But even though the lot size doesn't meet the requirements of Croydon, there's, that's still not like a just hard no.
Well, this lot itself doesn't, the lot, the portion of the parcel that's in Croydon doesn't meet the Croydon's minimum.
Right.
But if you add the two together, they do.
Right, but isn't it kind of like?
It's all one lot.
Oh, all right.
Even though the, the town line's right in the center, it's one lot, so.
Yeah, that's interesting. That's a tough one there.
Yeah. So, you know, it's what's going to cross over and future subdivision and what's the zoning here? And will the zoning here spill over into?
Right, right. Well, we run into this a lot where you have a logging and construction business. So if we were, if we were hired to go in and clear that lot. That town line going right through the property creates pretty big issues.
Yeah, you have to get a timber intake.
Exactly, yeah. There's a lot of other things, I'm sure.
It'd be a pain splitting the taxes up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Would that tree come off? Sunape's law?
Yeah. Somebody would have to shoot the town line and you'd have to make sure that that's exactly what you did.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so if they were to, if their driveway comes through Sunape, but their house is in Croydon, they pay half the lot's taxes in Croydon, half the lot's taxes in Sunape. Boy, that's a tough one.
They have to think about land use change tax.
Right, where you vote that, right?
Land use change tax. So now you have an acre and a half in Sunape and you have three acres in Croydon. And you're going to have land use change tax. But the land in Croydon is backland, so it's not as valuable. So we're going to get the short end of the stick.
Right, if, if it does go through, see. So we've got to fit Sunape more than we've got to fit Croydon.
Because they have all the amenities. House, the septic, everything.
Yeah, all of that will be a higher use, so this will be more land use change tax.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a tricky one. Well, I got to say though, it's nice to come to the meeting and not hear everybody yelling.
Some of the times meetings can get a little intense.
Well, there's a lot of money invested, you know? You can see like a lot of these developers, they put their, they put their time and their money into it. So if it doesn't go through, I mean, they make some money out of it. I can see that. Right, you don't have a lot of resources that they share, like all these developments up here. So we're going to be facing some pretty tricky problems here.
No, this is what we're going to be seeing. People are going to want to be subdividing their land and selling it off. There's going to be a lot of housing coming in, a lot of people coming in.
Yeah.
We've got like four digit already. Three? Yeah, three is, you're already without this one.
Without that one?
Yeah.
There'll be more and more.
Yeah.
Is there still, I haven't talked about this, is there still like, I know you guys at one point put in a bit of limit because there was a few years maybe in terms of massive subdivision that was pending. And you guys put in a limit as to how many subdivisions were, or at least how many developments could happen?
What we can do, we can't say, no, you can't develop your land. But what we can do is say, you can do this many per year. And, and they have to come to select or that way, what do they call it?
Phasing.
Phasing, yeah, no, I meant the, the premature.
Yeah, scattered and premature development.
Yeah, you know, like.
The slow that it's going to put on the school, that once a town reaches a certain population.
Well, that's, that's why we're trying to redo the master plan.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things that you can do. You can't stop growth, but you can, you can help make it more in the town's vision.
Gotcha.
And things that will benefit the town without. Hurting the infrastructure, where we don't have to go out and suddenly buy two more trucks to make sure the roads are clear.
Right, right.
Have our own postal system.
We have 200 more cars a day running up and down the roads.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting, a little bit of the town.
Somebody has a big parcel of land, puts in a new road, and now we have to pick up the road and now we have to maintain the road. That's, that's a big tax thing.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's funny, right? Because everybody that's driving, of course, they're coming to Croydon, everybody's person is at all taxes, so reasonable, it's so quiet. And then they flood the town and they drive the tax rate high and all of a sudden it's not quiet and peaceful and it's, it's a disaster created in the last town there.
Yeah.
I gotta go to Clermont 11 and the shop. Why can't we have a grocery store?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm shocked.
That's, that's, man, that's a gold mine.
Yeah, it's, it's like, it's just a matter of time before another town arrives.
Because of what she's asking for, because we actually, yeah, and then she wants to cover everything and not have, she doesn't want to have any money left that she has to pay.
Oh, no.
And since it's in the kind of the shape that it's in, you have to buy it and then you need to put more money into it to maybe get what you want it.
And the worst thing is the gas pumps came out.
Yeah, I know, the gas pumps.
I mean, I used to see people coming down the trail to get gas and food and everything.
That was, when I was 13 years old, that was my route. I would get on my ATV and I would ride down there and I'd ride to the store and get gas and get a bag of chips and soda and I would think it was the coolest in the world. Now we have open ATVs. Everybody in town riding their ATVs and where's she going to go? So you got to try to go to Grandham or Clermont or Newport or real trip and it's like, what? If they had fuel there.
Yeah.
Get all that traffic, all the soulville traffic would be right there. Yeah, it's too bad. Yeah, because now I think that if it was gone then, I don't think it will come back. I don't think.
It's going to be pricey.
Quite enough.
And it's a shame too, because the tanks were new. It was the plumbing from the tank to the pumps that needed replaced.
Oh, really?
But it was just stupid price. So she got a government deal to get them to pull the tanks.
That's too bad. The price was stupid to repair. If you ever wanted to reinstall it, it would be.
Just the plumbing from the tank to the pumps, which you said was like $200,000.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, well, I'm going to adjourn the meeting 7:55. Make a motion?
Make a motion, go adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again.
What do we say? 7:57?
7:57, I had 7:55, but I'm sure not mine.
Well. I'll probably send these to. Well, this is kind of. Complicated.